Summary of hearing procedures, we will review how the public may provide comment during today's session. At this time, if you're able, please join me in rising for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now move on to roll call. Vice Chair Cantrell.
Here.
Commissioner Barocia.
Here.
Commissioner Bendol.
Here.
Commissioner Bigford.
Here.
Commissioner Lardenois.
Here.
Commissioner Oliverio.
Here.
Commissioner Rosario.
Here.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Myself here. So that is nine in attendance, and we have quorum. Okay, we will now move on to summary of hearing procedures. If you want to address the commission, please fill out a speaker card located on the table near the audiovisual technician and deposit the completed card in the basket. There are also speaker cards in the back of the chambers and at the side entrance. The procedure for this hearing is as follows. After staff's presentation, applicants and/or repellents may make up to a five-minute presentation. During the public comment period, the chair will call out names on the submitted speaker cards in the order received for those members of the public who attend in person. As your name is called, line up in front of the microphone at the front of the chamber. Generally, each speaker will be given up to two minutes for public testimony, and speakers using a translator will have up to four minutes. At the discretion of the chair, the time allotted to each speaker may be changed depending on the number of items on the agenda, number of speakers, and other factors. Speakers using a translator will have double the time allotted. After the public testimony, the applicant and/or repellent may make closing remarks for up to an additional five minutes. Planning commissioners may ask questions of the speakers. Response to commissioner questions will not reduce the speaker's time allowance. The public hearing will then be closed, and the planning commission will take action on the item. The planning commission may request staff to respond to the public testimony, ask staff questions, and discuss the item. If you challenge these land use decisions in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. The planning commission's action on rezonings, prezonings, general plan amendments, and code amendments is only advisory to the city council. The city council will hold public hearing on these items. Section 20.120.400 of the municipal code provides the procedures for legal protest to the city council on rezonings and prezonings. The planning commission's action on conditional use permits is appealable to the city council in accordance with section 20.100.220 of the municipal code. Agendas and all staff reports for this meeting may be accessed on the city's website. All right, we'll move on to call to order and orders of the day. Before we begin, I want to remind the planning commission members and members of the public to follow our code of conduct at meetings. This includes commenting on the specific agenda item only and addressing the full body. Public speakers will not engage in a conversation with the commissioners or staff. All members of the planning commission, staff, and the public are expected to refrain from abusive language. Repeated failure to comply with the code of conduct, which will disturb, disrupt, or impede the orderly conduct of this meeting, may result in removal from the meeting. This meeting of the planning commission will now come to order. All right, we'll move on to public comment. Now is the time for public comment to the planning commission on non-agendized items. Please fill out a speaker's card and give it to the technician. Each member of the public may address the commission for up to two minutes. The commission cannot take any formal action without the item being properly noticed and placed on an agenda. In response to public comment, the planning commission is limited to the following options: responding to statements made or questions posed by members of the public, or requesting staff to report back on a matter at a subsequent meeting, or directing staff to place the item on a future agenda. And I do not have any speaker cards requesting public comment. Sorry, is this for an agendized item or non-agendized? Okay, then you can come down to the podium at this time. Thank you. And if you could just state your name for the record, and then you'll have two minutes.
My name is Sandra Delvin. I'm a resident of San Jose. I wanted to thank you for your service here and for your time. I know it must be a long day to work and then come here. But I would also like to ask in the future if you could consider going back and taking some of the things that we learned through COVID, which was having open meetings and Zoom input for those of us who have a little difficulty get down here. I had to have the blessed opportunity to take care of my two-year-old granddaughter, who is too fast and too furious for me. And it was exhausting to get everything wrapped up, get her fed, get her back to her parents, and rush down here. And I shouldn't say rush based on the traffic on 87. But I would appreciate that consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe this is an order, but city attorney, please let me know if I'm wrong. I believe when the city clerk first announced that we were no longer doing remote public comment, she also announced that by June of this year, we would return to it. And that has not happened, so could I request from staff that that staff request the city clerk for an update on remote public comment and deliver it at a future meeting?
Thank you, John. Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have any other members of the public who'd like to provide comment on non-agendized items? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone moving forward, so we will move on to deferrals and removal from calendar. Any item scheduled for hearing this evening for which deferral is being requested will be taken out of order to be heard first on the matter of deferral or removal. Staff will provide an update on the items for which deferral and removal is being requested. If you want to change any of the deferral dates recommended or speak to the question of deferring or removing these or any other items, you should say so at this time. And we have one item currently listed for deferral this evening, which is CP 24-016 and ER 24-145 relating to a utility facility. Staff, do we have any commentary on this deferral or any other items to defer today? Okay, in that case, do we have a motion from the commission to approve deferring this item?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve deferral from Commissioner Lardenois with a second from Vice Chair Cantrell. If there's no further discussion, we will move on to a vote. Vice Chair Cantrell.
Yes to the deferral.
Commissioner Barocia.
Yes.
Commissioner Bendol.
Yes.
Commissioner Bigford.
Yes.
Commissioner Lardenois.
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Myself, yes. That's nine yes, zero no, so the deferral passes. All right, we will now move on to tonight's consent calendar. Notice to the public, there will be no separate discussion of individual consent calendar items as they are considered to be routine and will be adopted by one motion. If a member of the commission requests debate, separate vote, or recusal on a particular item, that item may be removed from the consent calendar by the chair and considered separately. The public may comment on the entire consent calendar and any items removed from the consent calendar by the chair. Staff will provide an update on the consent calendar. If you wish to speak on one of these items individually, please come down to the podium at this time. And on the consent calendar this evening, we have two items. Item A is review and approval of our minutes from our November 20 meeting. And item B is CP 24-023 and ER 24-094, which is a conditional use permit to allow construction of a utility facility including an approximately 85-foot-high lattice tower at 3601 Williams Road. Do we have any members of the public who would like to speak on items currently on the consent calendar?
I move to adopt the consent calendar.
All right, we have a motion to approve the consent calendar from Commissioner Lardenois with a second from Commissioner Oliverio. I'm not seeing any hands for discussion, so we will move on to a vote. Vice Chair Cantrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Barocia.
Yes.
Commissioner Bendol.
Yes.
Commissioner Bigford.
Yes.
Commissioner Lardenois.
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Myself, yes. That's nine yes, zero no, so the motion passes. All right, we will now move on to tonight's public hearing. Generally, the public hearing items are considered by the planning commission in the order in which they appear on the agenda. However, please be advised that the commission may take items out of order to facilitate the agenda, such as to accommodate significant public testimony, or may defer discussion of items to later agendas for public hearing time management purposes. We have two items on the agenda for tonight's public hearing. The first is PP 24-010, which is a city-initiated ordinance update to change the Envision San Jose 2040 general plan land use designation and apply the Neighborhood Business District's overlay zoning district to allow residential uses in Japantown, North 13th Street, and Willow Glen Neighborhood Business Districts. Staff, do we have a presentation for this item?
Before we begin, staff would like to revise the project language and state into the record that this is a city-initiated ordinance to update ordinance update to amend the zoning district map and to amend Chapter 2065 Overlay Districts to apply the Neighborhood Business District Overlay Zoning District to allow residential uses with specific development standards in the Japantown Taylor Street only, North 13th Street, and Willow Glen Neighborhood Business Districts to amend Chapter 2040 Commercial Zoning Districts and Public Quasi-Public Zoning Districts and to amend Chapter 2055 Urban Village and Mixed Use Zoning Districts located at 601 North 13th Street, Council Districts 3 and 6. With the Good evening, Chair and planning commissioners. My name is Lindsay Gelman, and I am the project manager for this proposed ordinance update, file number PP 24-010. Joined with me this evening is Justin Daniels, Supervisor Planner and Roots Whiteo, Principal Planner. This presentation is on the proposed ordinance updates to Title 20 of the city's municipal code to create an overlay that would allow for residential uses with specific development standards in select Neighborhood Business Districts. So beginning with the background for this project, the general plan sets forth goals and policies that require the city to conduct a review of the general plan every four years. The purpose of this general plan four-year review is to evaluate significant changes in the planning context and achievement of key general plan goals. In December 2019, as part of the four-year review, city council had assigned the four-year reviews task force to review the scoping item to allow for residential uses in underutilized business corridors. A task force of 42 members was convened to work with city staff and recommend any mid-course actions needed to achieve these goals. In 2021, as part of the second four-year review, city council approved the recommendation given by the task force to allow for residential uses in specific with specific development standards in select Neighborhood Business Districts. The city has a total of 10 Neighborhood Business Districts, five that are located within urban villages that currently allow for residential uses as outlined in black in this map. The task force focused their scope of work on the five NBDs that were not located within urban villages, and further review showed that the Story Road Neighborhood Business District on the Far East was recommended to become an urban village, and the Cali Willow, also known as Willow Street NBD, was recommended to be removed from the overlay due to concerns for residential and business displacement. Staff conducted outreach in the Neighborhood Business District communities during the four-year review from April to June of 2021 to determine support for more intensive residential uses in NBDs. This feedback helped shape the proposed general plan overlay and development standards for the Willow Glen, North 13th Street, and Japantown Taylor Street only Neighborhood Business Districts. On November 10, 2021, planning commission considered the recommendation for the general plan text amendment to update the Neighborhood Business District overlay. And on December 7 of 2021, city council had adopted the general plan text amendment referred as GPT 21-001. This proposed ordinance is a follow-up action for the adoption of GPT 21-001 to allow for residential development within the three specified NBDs to mirror the general plan overlay adopted by city council in 2021. Approval of the proposed ordinance would effectuate GPT 21-001 and close out the remaining item for the last four-year review. Due to staffing priorities that developed after COVID, the California Department of Housing and Community Development asked staff to finalize the codification of GPT 21-001 by 2025. And in 2024, staff reviewed the affected sites within each NBD and did an analysis of their existing uses and residential capacity to see whether the proposed ordinance will change will result in an upzoning. Staff is proposing code updates to make necessary changes to the development standards and use table within commercial and mixed-use zoning districts to conform with the general plan text amendment GPT 21-001. And our public outreach policies required staff to hold community meetings for local residents of each NBD. Community meetings were scheduled and held in October to inform residents of the upcoming proposed ordinance changing and updates to the residential densities and maximum building heights in their specific zoning districts. This feedback was recorded and will be discussed later in the presentation. So the proposed ordinance update will require the following zoning code updates. We will be adding Part 5 to Chapter 2065 titled Overlay Districts, which will establish the Neighborhood Business District overlay. Section 20.65.260 will specify the overlay regulations and development standards for the Willow Glen Neighborhood Business District as referenced in Table 20-142. Section 20.65.270 will specify the regulations and standards for the Japantown Taylor Street only NBD as referenced in Table 20-143. And Section 2065.280 will specify the regulations and standards for the North 13th Neighborhood Business District as referenced in Table 20-144. We will also be amending the Use Table 2090 and Development Standards Table 2100 of Chapter 2040, the entitled Commercial Zoning Districts and Public Quasi-Public Zoning Districts to permit the use of mixed-use development within the NBD overlay by right with specific development standards in commercial pedestrian, commercial neighborhood, and commercial general zoning districts. We'll also be amending Development Standards Table 20-136, 20-137, and Use Table 20-138 of Chapter 20.55 entitled Urban Village and Mixed Use Zoning Districts to permit the use of mixed-use development within the NBD overlay by right with specific development standards in the mixed-use commercial and mixed-use neighborhood zoning districts. The addition of Part 5 in Chapter 2065 will apply to the sites in the Japantown Taylor Street only, North 13th Street, and Willow Glen NBDs. Projects in the subject NBDs will share the following regulation and development standards, such as replacing existing commercial and square footage at a minimum to an equivalent square footage of ground-floor commercial space where commercial or industrial uses do not currently exist. No commercial space is required unless the property is abutting existing commercial uses that also front Lincoln Ave, Taylor Street, and North 13th Street. In these locations, commercial space is required to be provided along at least 60% of the primary street frontage and must meet the development standards of commercial space and mixed-use projects as established in the citywide design guidelines and document. All development shall comply with city design guidelines and adaptively reuse any historic structures on the property. Parking, lighting, and setback regulations shall follow the underlying zoning district. In addition to the changes mentioned in the previous slide, the addition of Part 5 in Chapter 2065 will create Sections 20.65.260 to 20.65.280, which will specify the development standards regarding maximum densities and maximum building heights as shown in this table above. In the North 13th Street Neighborhood Business District, no development shall exceed a maximum residential density of 50 dwelling units per acre and a maximum building height of 50 feet. Within, on the Japantown Taylor Street only, along the north side of Taylor Street, all sites shall not exceed a maximum residential density of 50 dwelling units per acre and a maximum height of 50 feet. Sites on the south side of Taylor Street shall not exceed a maximum density of 65 dwelling units per acre and a maximum height of 65 feet. For the Willow Glen Neighborhood Business Districts, sites that are less than 1.5 acres have a maximum density of 50 dwelling units an acre and a maximum building height of 50 feet. Sites that are 1.5 acres or more have a maximum residential density of 65 dwelling units per acre and a maximum height of 65 feet. Polls were taken back in 2021 from these community meetings to gauge support for more intense development, and this feedback helped the task force create the following standards. Feedback from the North 13th community was generally supportive of intensification and development. The majority of community members voted for 35 dwelling units per acre with additional support for higher densities. A slight majority of community members voted for 35-foot maximum height, but there was a near majority that supported a 50-foot maximum height. In Japantown, the majority supported a maximum density of 50 dwelling units per acre, and most community members voted for a maximum height of 50 feet. While the polling results indicated 50-feet height was preferred, many residents did express the need to ensure buildings are appropriate in scale to the surrounding neighborhood and would possibly support allowing projects no higher than 65 feet on the southern portion of Taylor Street while allowing no higher than 50 feet along the northern portion of Taylor Street, which is predominantly surrounded by single-family homes. In Willow Glen, there was a tied vote of for 35-foot or 50-foot maximum height, but there was no clear answer regarding maximum density. 50 feet is currently the existing height limit for most properties within Lincoln Ave NBD, and staff are proposing to maintain this height limit for properties that are 1.5 acres or less. So the NCC general plan land use designation does not currently allow for residential uses with the exception of 100% deed-restricted affordable housing. To conform with the general plan, we had to amend the existing Use Table 2090 in Section 2040.100 to add mixed-use residential-commercial within the Neighborhood Business District overlay as a permitted use by right within commercial pedestrian, commercial neighborhood, and commercial general zoning districts. We also had to amend the development standards in Table 202100 to include an alternative maximum residential density and height within the Neighborhood Business District overlay. The mixed-use commercial general plan land use designation currently allows residential uses at a maximum residential density of 50 dwelling units per acre and a maximum building height of 85 feet. So the proposed ordinance will lower the maximum building height for mixed-use commercial properties in the Japantown and North 13th Street NBD and increase the maximum residential density for properties on the south side of Taylor Street. Polls from the 2021 community meetings show that the that the North 13th Street was generally supportive of intensification and development as previously stated, and proposed changes to Chapter 2055 of Mixed Use and Urban Village and Mixed Use Zoning Districts will amend the development standards in Table 2136 and Table 2137 to refer to Part 5 of Chapter 2065 for additional regulations. They'll also be amending they'll be amending Use Table 2138 in Section 2055.203 to allow for mixed-use development in the Neighborhood Business District overlay by right in the mixed-use commercial and mixed-use neighborhood zoning districts. As part of our public outreach, staff conducted three community meetings throughout October to inform residents of the proposed ordinance updates. Each of these community meetings were held virtually, one for each Neighborhood Business District. The North 13th Street NBD community meeting was held on October 7 with a total of six attendants present. The Japantown Taylor Street only meeting was held on October 10 with 14 attendants present. And Willow Glen's community meeting was held on October 16 with a total of 33 attendants. General concerns over the proposed ordinance focused on the impact of parking, congestion, public safety, and labor standards with potential residential developments. Other comments regarding historic preservation, transit access, and business displacement with proposed developments were received. Staff did emphasize that there is no development being proposed with this ordinance, just changes to development standards. So for CIGO, we are asking to consider the determination of consistency for the Addendum Resolution Number 80300 to the Envision San Jose 2040 general plan. To finalize this presentation, staff recommends planning commission to recommend that city council approve an ordinance to amend the San Jose Municipal Code Title 20, Chapter 2065 Overlay Districts to establish the Neighborhood Business District overlay, zoning district pursuant to the city's council-adopted general text amendment establishing a land use overlay in Neighborhood Business Districts to allow for residential uses with specific development standards in the Japantown Taylor Street only, North 13th Street, and Willow Glen Neighborhood Business Districts, as well as to amend the zoning district map to add Neighborhood Business District overlay zoning district to 313 parcels and allow for residential uses in the Japantown, North 13th, and Willow Glen Neighborhood Business Districts. And to amend the San Jose Municipal Code Title 20, Chapter 2040 Commercial Zoning Districts and Public Quasi-Public Zoning Districts to allow for residential uses with specific development standards in the Willow Glen Neighborhood Business District. And amend the San Jose Municipal Code Title 20, 2055 Urban Village and Mixed Use Zoning Districts to allow for residential uses with specific development standards in the North 13th Street and Japantown Taylor Street only Neighborhood Business District. Thank you. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you, staff. At this time, we will open the floor to public comment. I don't have any speaker cards for this item, but if there are any members of the public attending in person who would like to provide comment on this item, feel free to come down to the podium at this time. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone move forward, so we will turn it over to the commission for discussion. First up, we have Commissioner Lardenois.
Thank you, Chair. I want to thank staff for their work on this item. You know, as always, I think it's great to find opportunities to do more of a mix of uses in our city. And, you know, I think our Neighborhood Business Districts are exactly the kinds of areas that we envision doing excuse me, doing mixed-use development in. So I want to move that we adopt the staff recommendation here.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the staff recommendation from Commissioner Lardenois with a second from Vice Chair Cantrell. Are there any other comments from the commission? Commissioner Young.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to echo Commissioner Lardenois. I think that, you know, when I travel to other cities in the United States, the most vibrant neighborhoods are the ones that have a mix of residential and, you know, small stores and businesses and so forth. So I think this is taking our city in the right direction for that and providing more opportunities for housing. So I'll be supporting the item.
Thank you. I had a quick question for staff. I saw in the staff report there was mention of SB 330, the no-net loss provision, and it mentions that the development standards would result in a loss of 1,575 residential units. So wondering if you could walk me through kind of the math of the loss, given that it seems like we're generally allowing residential in business districts? So just wanted some clarity on that.
So the 1,500 was related to the decrease in heights that reduced the residential capacity, I believe, in the Japantown?
North 13th.
The North 13th and Japantown's Neighborhood Business Districts. I do believe that we have a group of rezonings that will be coming that will be going to city council in the December 17 that would help balance out the city council in the December seventeenth that would help balance out the fifteen hundred.
Thank you. And just to be clear, we were decreasing the max height, but we weren't decreasing the max units per acre. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's my only question, so we will go over to Vice Chair Cantrell, followed by Commissioner Oliverio.
Actually, I just want to say thank you. You took something that feels kind of mundane, and you actually have a good reading voice, and we were able to keep up. But, and I think it was a great presentation, and I appreciate the time and effort. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go over to Commissioner Oliverio.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the presentation. And just to confirm on the votes for the neighborhood, were those in-person meetings or just done online as far as an online survey within the same public meeting, community meeting?
The community meetings were held virtually, and the polls were taken during those community meetings. I believe it was a set of four or five questions for each meeting, and it was an A, B, C, D reply.
Great, appreciate that. And if, in a nutshell, what I think I've heard is that HCD has told the city of San Jose, you must bring this item and have it approved by two thousand and twenty-five, or else, and I just want to understand the else. And I don't know if it's a city attorney question or for staff.
I can chime in. Ruth Gueto, principal planner. So our work plan that was approved by the city council and certified by HCD did say that we would bring this to council for approval in two thousand and twenty-four, end of two thousand and twenty-four, so which would be this month. We haven't yet encountered sort of, you know, when, if we, that we have programs or policies that were not, that council's not approving or that we're not moving forward based on that plan, so, but every year we report to HCD, and if that were to happen, if council decided they didn't want to do this, then in April when we report to HCD, they would know, and I think it's up to them to decide how to respond to something that we said we would do.
And Ruth, so it's fair to say that we're not clear what HCD would do if council said, eh, we're going to park this one and not implement it?
Hi, Jared Ferguson, principal planner. I think they would look at it, and if we continued to have repetition of things that we said we would do that we would not do, then they may come and try to make a finding and say, well, you're out of compliance, right? So it's an accumulation of things generally, right, that they would look for. So if we didn't do this, it would be one thing that they would say that you haven't done and you're not, you know, sort of complying with.
Got it. And then no net loss of commercial, correct? No net loss of commercial square footage?
We have a commercial replacement requirements set for each Neighborhood Business District, so it is dependent on what's currently existing.
Got it. So let's say there was a building that had ten thousand square feet of retail, and you wanted to knock it down and put this with, what would be the, I heard sixty percent storefront, but I wasn't a hundred percent sure, does that mean six thousand square feet of ten thousand or ten thousand feet?
So if there is existing commercial uses, they would have to replace that one-to-one ratio, so they would replace that entire ten thousand square foot that you mentioned. Now, if there were no commercial uses, then we would require the sixty percent primary street frontage.
Got it. And on the boundary, this was just, because obviously Lincoln, well, I'll speak for the Willow Glen section, or even Thirteenth, they extend further, and the boundaries were just sort of suggested by council or staff?
The Neighborhood Business District boundary, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was established like decades ago, like, yeah.
Right, so there was, okay, because like the CBID stopped at Willow Street, and then it expanded this year to Co., but that was way after staff would have been working on this.
Yeah, it's like the NBD was established, I think, in the nineties, I would say, so that, that boundary has always been part of the.
Understood.
Yeah.
And then, and just to be clear, today, you can, I'll stay with Lincoln Avenue, you can knock down a building and put up one hundred percent affordable, low-income, by-right, no hearing, no parking, correct? And then this, I want to confirm, would a market rate development trigger a public hearing?
Yes, they have to go through the permitting process.
Okay, and I thought somewhere in the presentation I heard by-right.
When we mean by-right, we mean, like, it's permitted by-right, but you have to go through like a site development permit to have that project forward.
So any project would then therefore come through the traditional process?
So it's, yeah, it was permitted in the zoning ordinance, but you had to submit, yeah, a site development permit for the project.
Okay, and as much as we brought in SB three three zero, in the other way, it's, you know, by taking an area that never had housing and putting housing, based on SB three three zero, you'll never be able to go back. It's not like the council in a future year could say, oh, we've changed our mind for whatever reason, the state law would not allow that, and I'll turn to the city attorney for that one.
Sorry, Commissioner, just so I'm understanding the question, you're saying that if we allow housing now in the future, the city would not then be able to remove housing through rezoning?
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's my question, and your response is?
I can chime in. You could, council could come back and say, we don't want housing here, but we have to find other sites to supplement it, so the no-net loss comes into play there.
Got it. And then I guess the only other thing is that when council considered this proposal to add housing to other areas, AB two thousand and ninety-seven hadn't been passed yet, which is the elimination of parking along, you know, bus lines, and so I guess, hmm, there is a consideration to anticipate how it affects the street or the neighborhood versus, you know, if there was no AB two thousand and ninety-seven, and the parking and city could allocate or determine a number of parking spaces, that would be one thing in balancing, you know, community members concerned about parking or other merchants concerned about parking, but if AB two thousand and ninety-seven, that's sort of out the door. And I guess, was there any thought process of, since this, you know, has been done over the course of a few years, was there anything like, wow, that kind of changes things? I mean, it certainly changes things across California and across all cities and in fact of this, or staff felt like, well, it's just what it is, we're continuing with council direction, et cetera?
We were just moving forward with council direction and getting rid of the parking minimums, part of the ordinance update as well.
Okay, okay, and, yeah, that answers my questions. I appreciate your time, and I, as I shared at the beginning, it just feels more of it's a HCD mandates upon cities about, you know, allowing the potential for more housing, and the city would be in a level of risk if it decided to sort of go back on what it already had told HCD. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any additional hands, so if there's no further discussion, we will move on to a vote. As a reminder, the motion on the table from Commissioner Lardonwa with a second from Vice Chair Cantrell is to approve the staff recommendation. First up to vote is Vice Chair Cantrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Barocia.
Yes.
Commissioner Bendal.
Yes.
Commissioner Bigford.
Yes.
Commissioner Lardonwa.
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Myself, yes, that's nine yes, zero no, so the motion passes. All right, we will now move on to tonight's second item for public hearing, which is PP two thousand and forty-four dash zero one one, which is a zoning code update to allow a local streamlined review process for eligible residential projects. Staff, do we have a presentation for this item?
Yes, just give us one second to get it teed up.
All right, good evening, commissioners. Jared Ferguson, principal planner. I'm also joined with David Keown, principal planner, and Michelle Flores, supervising planner and our project manager. So we're here tonight to talk to you about file number PP two thousand and forty-four zero one one. This is our city streamlined review process. So first, just wanted to give you some background on this item. So as a part of the development of our housing element, we're required, we were required to conduct analysis of governmental constraints to the development of housing for all income levels. As a part of the identification of those constraints, we are also required to look for potential strategies that would help us reduce those constraints to help us fulfill our regional housing needs allocation, so for housing production. And one of the key items that came about out of that analysis of governmental constraints was the city's timeline of approval for multifamily housing on infill sites, and how we could make that faster to lower costs and decrease risk for those projects to deliver new housing units. And so on the basis of that analysis, we included item, or program P seven in the housing element. This strategy was entitled, or program was entitled, to the infill housing ministerial approval ordinance, and the objective of the program was to adopt and implement a city streamlined review process that would allow the city to ministerially approve infill housing development that meets all of our objective standards. And so through a ministerial process, there is no public hearing requirement, and also projects benefit from the ministerial exemption under CEQA. And as a part of the program, we're also required to identify metrics. So the first metric was that we would bring this forward to city council by December of two thousand and twenty-four, the ordinance codifying this new process. And then moving forward, that we would also evaluate the process improvements after six months and then have ongoing evaluation through our housing catalyst work plan updates. And then additionally, that we would look for up to two hundred units per year approved through this new process, approval process, and we will expect a minimum average reduction in the length of time of twenty-five percent for planning permits. So that's kind of the background of why we're here tonight with this item, and I'll pass it to Michelle now to go over the specifics of the ordinance.
So this project is utilizing and expanding the existing local ministerial ordinance review process to allow additional sites to use this review process. So currently, this process applies to North San Jose residential overlays, so the mixed-income housing overlay, affordable housing overlay, and the housing element residential overlay, and emergency shelters. And so the existing ordinance defines what this applies to, so for housing developments, it's residential or mixed-use that has a minimum of two-thirds square footage for residential and refers to the definition provided by state law. Projects must meet all objective site design and construction standards, included in Title seventeen, which is building and construction, Title nineteen for subdivisions, Title twenty of the zoning code, and then they must comply with all objective designs guidelines in the citywide design guidelines, and approved urban village plans and specific plans, and the existing local minister ordinance allows for applications to utilize density bonus, and density bonus may be used for concessions and waivers. And since projects need to meet all objective standards and there's no discretionary review, they cannot concurrently include a development exception application, variance application, or use permits, and the process currently allows for tentative maps entry removals if they are submitted concurrently to be reviewed ministerially. And the ordinance currently has some standards of what type of projects are excluded from using this process, so designated farmlands, sites that contain wetlands are within a high hazard severity zone, designated as hazardous waste site, within a delineated earthquake fault zone, within a special flood hazard area regulatory floodway, identified for conservation or under conservation easement, habitat for protected species, and within a mobile home park. So, and if the site falls under any of these criteria, they cannot utilize this process and have to go through a standard site development permit. And so for the additional sites that could qualify, these are all projects that would have typically required a site development permit and would have been heard at a planning director's hearing. And so this is the criteria that projects would need to meet in order to qualify. This slide here is for site characteristics, so in addition to the criteria that was previously mentioned, they would need to be in one of these identified growth areas, so it'd be within planned urban villages, except the Alum Rock Avenue Urban Village, Station Area, Capital Caltrain, and then the specific plans of Midtown and Jackson Taylor. The properties need to have a land use designation and be zoned urban residential, transit residential, urban village, or mixed-use commercial. They cannot be within the airport influence zone, not within a planned development zoning, and have to be within half a mile of an existing major transit stop or existing stop along a high-quality transit corridor. And the zoning districts that were identified are sites where multifamily and mixed-use projects are permitted, as are permitted use. In addition to the site characteristics, the projects must meet the following characteristics. The project must provide a minimum density of forty dwelling units per acre. This is in addition to complying with the general plan land use designation, so if a land use designation allows them to go lower, they have to meet a minimum of forty dwelling units per acre, and if the land use designation requires a minimum of anything higher, they need to comply with that higher land use dwelling units per acre. For demolition, they cannot reduce the total number of units that are existing on site. They cannot demolish units that have been occupied by tenants in a multifamily residence to find us three or more units within the last five years, and it cannot demolish projects subject to an affordable housing regulatory agreement or properties protected under LS Act. And for historic, this, if, besides identified structures, any other classification on the historic resource inventory list is ineligible for using this process. Identified structures, and then any building that's over forty-five years old would be required at the time of submittal to provide a historic report that documents and evaluates that the buildings are not eligible for listing in the National Register, the California Register, or the historic, San Jose Historic Resource Inventory List, and this applies to the demolition or alteration of the buildings. And so this project also includes changes to the existing local ministerial ordinance. So currently, the ordinance only excluded properties that were listed as a city landmark on the city's Historic Resource Inventory List, so this would amend that existing criteria and expand all projects utilizing this process to have to meet that requirement. So this would also apply to the North San Jose overlays. The, we would also add an additional criteria that excludes projects within three hundred feet of a creek, and excludes projects that are within one hundred feet of a city landmark or a landmark district, and projects would be subject to standard environmental permit And so the zoning code currently already provided some standard permit conditions regarding maintenance of landscape, compliance with stormwater requirements and hours of operation, but would be expanded to include those environmental permit conditions. Since projects would be ministerial permits that are subject to objective standards and do not allow for discretionary review, under CEQA Guidelines section fifteen to sixty-eight, they would be eligible to use statutory CEQA exemption for ministerial permits. If a project is mixed-use, the non-residential portion must meet the CEQA screening criteria listed in council policy five dash one, the transportation analysis policy, and the standard permit conditions that are required are ones that are typically found and included in permits, so are site development permits. And so for a city council outreach policy, our current outreach policy six dash thirty does not currently require a community meeting for ministerial permits, so the city council policy was last updated in two thousand and four, prior to the use of ministerial permits. So since they are excluded from six dash thirty, ministerial permits are not required to hold a community meeting. We are working on an update to our council policy, and we intend to address this as part of that update, and want to make sure that we look at ministerial permits, not just this process as a whole as we evaluate that policy. And we have the outreach policy scheduled to begin in two thousand and twenty-five. I'm the project manager for that project, and we will be looking to revise it as a whole and modernize the outreach. So current council policy had things like broadcasting on the city TV channel, didn't include social media, so we'll work on those updates as a whole. And so for our metrics, we had two hundred units per year, and so this process would apply to approximately six hundred sites. And so this process would apply to approximately 600 sites. They're each approximately an acre average, so it's about 600 acres where this could potentially apply. And that is based on site characteristics, not project characteristics of projects. It may be less sites depending if they meet that criteria. And approximately 16% of those are housing element sites. For the review metric, so that was the 25% reduction in time. We looked at site development permits that were entitled in the last few years. Site development permits that were heard at a planning director's hearing had an average review time of 20 months. Ministerial permits had an average review time of approximately 10 months. So we anticipate a reduction review time of 25 to 50%. And we, this project will be reported in the existing housing catalyst work plan dashboard. That dashboard is updated semi-annually and we will provide an annual update to CED and city council, which is typically done in the spring. For outreach, a community meeting was held virtually on November 7th. There are approximately 30 participants. We also held individual meetings with some organizations, Working Partnerships USA, catalyzers V, Housing Action Coalition, Tami Nation Tribe Preservation Action Council, San Jose Green foothills, Santa Clara Valley Bird Alliance, California YMB, Green Belt Alliance and SV at Home. The project website with the proposed criteria and maps of potential qualifying sites were posted on the project website prior to the community meeting. And then we also added these sites to our San Jose Housing Site Explorer, which is an interactive map that shows the potential qualifying sites so people could see exactly where those are. And then just also I want to add that this outreach is in addition to the outreach that was done for the housing element, which occurred late 2019 to 2023. And that had approximately 4,500 stakeholders that participated as part of that process. And for CEQA, city prepared an addendum to the envisioned San Jose 2040 general plan final environmental impact report and the initial study and addendum are posted on the city website. And posted here is the staff recommendation. Staff is proposing some changes to the recommendation. So staff is proposing to change the standard permit conditions from an appendix to the resolution. So as these were attached, they were in, they were in appendix to the ordinance. And the staff would like to change those permit conditions as a separate resolution. And staff is also proposing to amend Section 20.195, 100 point F to clarify that the conditions are adopted by city council by resolution. So currently the language states that projects subject to ministerial review process will be subject to city standard environmental permit conditions adopted by city council. And staff would like to add to the end of that sentence to clarify that it's standard permit conditions adopted by city council by a resolution. And additionally, the standard permit conditions included were included in our environmental document and there were two sections of conditions. They were the standard environmental permit conditions and then conditions of approval. The document posted did not include the conditions of approval. So we will be adding those to the resolution and we have them here. And so David can help me kind of summarize these. This, we'll start with air quality.
Good evening, planning commissioners. David Keon, principal planner of the city's environmental review team. So I just want to mention, so these are actual conditions of approval that were identified in the initial study, addendum that was posted to the city's website, but they did not make it onto that appendix document. So we're just going to briefly go over these that are, so they're already published, it's just that they didn't make it into that appendix. So this is for construction air quality. This measure is for modeling for health risk assessments for construction. Common infill projects will have a lot of construction activity and there's often, there's a requirement for a health risk assessment. So this is what this is requiring, there'd be health risk assessment and that may result in the requirement that if there is an effect on sensitive receptors, usually residences, hospitals, daycare facilities, then they would have to use tier four construction equipment or equivalent, which is the most stringent type of equipment. Next slide, please. Yeah, so this is just, these are, this is the language of the air quality measure for doing a health risk assessment. So this is common for all infill projects in the city of San Jose. Biological resources. So this is for projects that will be removing trees or doing development near, near trees or other areas of, areas where there potentially could be birds. There's going to be a requirement for nesting bird surveys during the breeding season. Again, this is standard requirement for all projects and all development projects in the city of San Jose. This is just codifying this as part of this process. Hazards and hazardous materials. So as Michelle mentioned, project sites that are listed per the state as hazardous material sites that are of open cleanup case or are not, are not suitable for residential development. This, this process would not apply to them. However, many project sites are not on that list. However, they do have remnant agricultural chemicals since this valley is known for historic agricultural uses. So therefore, like all other development projects in the city of San Jose, they're going to require a phase one environmental site assessment. And as part of that process, that may require a phase two environmental site assessment, which will include measures for addressing potential agricultural waste that could be remnants on the site. Measures would have to be implemented, including a site management plan for approval usually by the county of environmental health or state department of toxic and substance control. Again, this is to ensure that future residents of these projects and workers are going to be protected during construction. And as I mentioned, this is common for all projects within the city of San Jose. Noise, this is for construction noise measures. So this is construction noise management plan in order to notify neighbors and take measures in order to reduce, reduce noise when construction impacts, when construction will be more than 12 months. Most residential infill projects, you know, are going to be located near residences. They're going to be more than 12 months. So they'll have, this is ensuring that projects, even though they're going for ministerial process, will still have to do, go through the process of doing a construction noise management plan and having a noise coordinator and measures on site to ensure that there is some sort of accountability for construction noise. Next slide. And yeah, just want to mention there's another aspect in addition to noise, there's also vibration impacts. This is from the general plan. There are thresholds for vibration from construction on neighboring structures. This is requiring a construction vibration monitoring plan if you're within distances of structures and particularly within, within a certain distance of historic structures. So this is example, if they're, you're building near, near a structure that's identified on the historic resources inventory, then you'd have additional measures. This is to prevent potential damage that could occur during construction. And again, you know, this is common for all urban infill projects in the city of San Jose. Obviously, since it's where these are infill projects, they're going to be near adjacent structures. So this is implementing that policy in the general plan. And finally, there's a measure for tribal cultural resources. This is through our consultation of the Tami Nation Tribe. This is implementing what is required for pretty much most projects in the city of San Jose have to go through a similar process. This is requiring that there be training of construction workers by an archaeologist and tribal, tribal representative from a tribe that's culturally affiliated with the area. And also in certain criteria, there would be Native American monitors on site and archaeological monitors. This is consistent with many other projects. There's been a lot of sensitivity and interest in protecting these resources. So even though the projects will not be going through the full CEQA process, this would ensure that there would be protection for these resources. All of these measures are very commonly found in all the projects that go through site development permits. So these, you know, this is not, not new. We're just ensuring that projects that go through the ministerial process would meet these criteria and would therefore reduce and avoid environmental impacts.
I'll go back to the original recommendation. Okay, so staff is recommending the planning commission amend, recommend to city council to take all the following actions, adopt the resolution, adopting the addendum to the envisioned San Jose 2040 general plan, final program impact report, supplemental environmental impact report and supplemental EIR and addenda thereto, adopting the resolution for the standard permit conditions with the additional conditions that were provided on the screens. And then approve an ordinance of the city of San Jose amending sections, various sections of Title 20 of the San Jose municipal code to amend to Chapter 20.55 to include amendments to Section 20.55203, Table 20 dash 138 to allow stream full infill housing development and adding Note 28, amending Chapter 20.195 to include amendments to Section 20.195.020 to add the definition of infill. Section 20.195.070 to allow streamlined infill housing developments to qualify for the local ministerial approvals. And Section 20.195.080 to amend existing ministerial standards and add a new standard. Section 20.195.100 to add permit conditions. And lastly, add a new part, Chapter 20.195 to allow ministerial approval for streamlined infill housing developments and then amend Chapter 20.20 to try to definition for streamlined review for infill housing developments and that includes staff's presentation.
Thank you, staff. Commissioner Oliverio, I see you have a hand. Did you have something? Okay.
I have questions for staff, if that's okay. Thank you very much for the presentation and your work. I don't see slides that denote the geographic areas that this is impacting. Do you have that in other slides in the deck?
We have them as attachments to the staff report, so they're all PDFed.
But not here?
Not in here, no.
Okay, I think that would be sort of valuable to see. So to summarize, it's the urban villages minus Alum Rock and Story. And then I think you said the Midtown specific plan would also be a condition, Japantown specific plan and North San Jose and then the Capital Total Train Quarter, which I think is in District Two?
District Seven.
District Seven. And then, you know, on the last one, there was a, a report about how many parcels? How many parcels does this one affects? I think this is the quite larger.
So this, so the approximately 600 sites are new additional sites that could qualify. This doesn't include North San Jose sites.
Okay, thank you very much. And then is it, the CEQA clearance is only tied to ministerial approval, approval without ministerial.
Sorry, Commissioner Oliverio, I know we see a number of hands here. Do you think we could conclude?
Well, I just wanted to ask questions of staff and then otherwise we can still take public comment, but I have questions for staff in the presentation.
Could we come back to them after public comment, just in the interest of allowing clips to speak?
Typically, we're allowed to ask questions of staff. I mean, it's not, I'm not, I'm not making a motion. I just want to clarify things for the staff report, which I think also might be available for the speakers.
Understood. I just know that we have a number of hands here, so I think it'd be best if we kind of allow the public to speak and then come back to the commission to keep it all together.
Okay.
Sorry. Okay, at this time, we will open the floor to public comment. I have a couple speaker cards here and then if there's anyone who has not submitted a speaker card, feel free to come down after I call these cards. First up, we have Sandra Delvin, Rick Attar, Jake Wild and Manuel Salazar. So if you could all just come down to the podium at this time, you'll each have two minutes to speak. Thank you.
My name is Sandra Delvin. It's a pleasure to speak with you. And again, I want to thank all of you for your work and your service here. In my rush, I left my prepared speech, so I tried to type some notes. We need more public comment and outreach. 30 people, one meeting. I heard about it on a very small next door post. However, we sat with a lot of pro ministerial rights people, as was indicated by staff, other people, but what about our neighbors? What about our residents? I think we need a little more public outreach and to do this at the end of the year is during holiday season, I think this is a major change. Public input is messy and it's time consuming, but that doesn't mean we should eliminate it. Maybe we need to figure out how to streamline it. And what I didn't hear in this presentation is I only heard about the staff recommending eliminating public comment. What are we doing on the city side, on the staff side to streamline? The entire streamline should not be coming by eliminating our residents' voices. The buildings that will be built will be here far longer than any of the builders. We already have buildings that are over 100 years old. To speed things up, do we really want to eliminate the public input, public buy-in, public thought? Are we going to only have echo chambers of the people who agree with us? Have we not learned that that's a problem? I would ask you to give us more time. I would ask you to have more outreach. I would also ask that you at least have a full compliment on the city council with the new members of the city council. Maybe the appointed D3, but D3 people and areas are in this and they don't have a vote right now. I think.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Rick Attar and I live in District Nine. The absence of community input and environmental reviews is significant concern, right? No one in this city feels like they have a say. That's a problem. The fact that this proposal has been developed and presented, it suggests the planning commission and city council may be prioritizing other interests outside of its residents. The primary supporters of this appear to be those that stand to benefit. We continue to open our doors to developers and nonprofits, but we don't listen to our citizens and our residents. The situation highlights a broader issue where residents feel their voices and input are not heard. This leads to a lack of trust, right? We sit here and continually things are pushed on to us. We don't have a say. Nobody in my neighborhood said this is a great idea, but no one feels like they have any say. No one feels like anyone's protecting us. No one feels like anyone's hearing us. It is the definition and there's so many people that want to streamline public housing and affordable housing and it's essential. But the minute we silence and we don't give the impacted, the impacted residents the chance to say something and have a voice and shape their city, that's where it starts to fall apart. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jake Wild and I'm here tonight on behalf of Catalyzers V and our members to say that we do support this policy and the streamlining of these homes. We would also support a policy that goes beyond this and increases that inventory of sites. It was, I think, 550 in another slide I had seen. And in the grand scheme of things, in the total area of San Jose, that's a very small number of sites. So we would support next steps on that as well, to see that go beyond there. The other thing is that we, the city, everybody spent a lot of time in the last few years on our housing element. And this program was laid out in our housing element. I know our organization Catalyzers V, one of the programs we focused on was that P7 policy. So there has been considerable outreach done already to get that housing element approved that went through commission, that went to the city council. And now this policy is here tonight and in our housing element. This is one of those things we got to do to build more housing. We were also concerned as a organization that focuses a lot on quality community engagement, the fact that moving these projects to a ministerial approval process would sort of take away that community meeting. And something that we thought about was that the only thing worse than no community meeting is a very frustrating and bad community meeting where there is no way to really engage with folks over their concerns on that project, since it is going to be going through a ministerial process. So perhaps a better way to deal with that will be through the 6 dash 30 policy revision that's going to be coming later next year. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, members of the.
All right. Good evening, members of the San Jose Planning Commission. My name is Manuel Salazar, and I will be speaking on behalf of SV Home. So, I'd like to begin by saying that we strongly support the proposed infill housing ministerial approval ordinance and energy to recommend the adoption to City Council. This ordinance is an important step towards streamline the approval process for residential infill development, especially within transit-rich areas. It can help reduce the cost of development and help San Jose meet its housing goals, specifically in key growth areas where robust community engagement process has already taken place. It's with nonprofits as well as community members. SV Home has, excuse me, SV Home has been engaged in this ordinance development from the beginning, participating in community meetings, study sessions, and stakeholder groups, which staff has graciously helped. We understand this ordinance to be an initial phase with future iterations expanding eligibility criteria and including additional growth areas. With that said, there are some, you know, modifications that we'd like to see in future iterations of this proposal, specifically expanding general plan land use designations in future iterations, as well as explicitly outlining that projects may leverage the state density bonuses, waivers, and concessions with this specific program. By integrating these changes, it would really allow the program to be used to its full capacity, and it would actually produce a lot more housing, which we would love to see. As you're well aware, San Jose faces significant housing needs. Right now, we need approximately 62,200 homes in order to meet our rent obligations in this cycle. Of those, 23,800 are affordable homes, so we desperately need to make more homes, and we desperately need to make more affordable homes, and this is a policy that would help unlock those. Once again, I just want to say that we're pleased to see that this ordinance, which the city has worked very, very hard on, we're excited to see that it's moving forward. We come in city staff for the leadership in preparing this specific ordinance and look forward to continued collaboration as it's implemented. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Hello. My name is Elizabeth Conlin. I'm a San Jose resident, a renter, and a member of local pro-housing group, South Bay Yimby. I'm here tonight, three days before my due date, to give birth, to ask you to be bold and move forward with an ordinance on streamlining review for infill housing in San Jose that meets the scale of the challenges our city faces. San Jose consistently ranks as one of the least affordable cities in the country. For those of us who are younger or lower income, finding and keeping an affordable home is a struggle, and the prospect of homeownership is depressingly out of reach. Improving the speed and reliability of home building is urgently needed to end the housing shortage and improve affordability, and I worry that the proposed policy is too limited to address permitting delays and uncertainty in San Jose. Currently, the eligibility standards for both sites and projects are too narrow and will exclude too many new developments. The ordinance as drafted applies to 550 acres, which is less than 1% of all of the city's land. I support the recommendations to expand the policy in following ways. One, expand coverage to include all approved urban villages and all major transit areas. Two, expand eligible land use designations to all allowing multifamily housing. Three, allow limited waivers of the city's objective design standards for density bonus projects. I am proud to live in a city that has historically been one of the best for economic mobility in the nation. Let's build on that legacy and move forward with an ambitious reform to zoning policy that is failing too many of our neighbors. Ministerial approval should be the norm for infill multifamily housing in San Jose, not an exception. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one more card here for Dan Brown. Feel free to come down to the podium, and if there's anyone else in attendance tonight who would like to provide comment on this item, who hasn't already spoken, you can also come down to the podium at this time.
Thank you for letting me speak this evening. Just very, very short. One of the parts of this is bypassing the input of neighborhood communities directly affected by the private infill housing. Not having the neighbors' input is kind of starting off being a bad neighbor. And so I think having those meetings, where you get a chance to be part of the process, is an important part. If we're going to be living next to each other, we should have that kind of a relationship. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't see anyone else coming forward, so we will conclude public comment, turn it back over to the commission. We will go back to Commissioner Oliverio, since I cut you off before, and then we will go to Vice Chair Cantrell, and then Commissioners Rosario and Bigford.
Thank you, Chair. So, returning back to the question of sequent clearance connected to ministerial, is that the only way sequent clearance can be done, is with ministerial?
So just to clarify, are you saying this is the, for the ministerial projects that qualify for the ministerial ordinance, or any project?
What we're talking about tonight, I heard language that said, "We are allowed to do a sequent clearance along with a ministerial approval." And so my question is, is sequent clearance only attached to ministerial approval, or not, or some other ways?
So there's a sequel exemption for ministerial projects. So if the project qualifies for these standards, it would be exempt for the ministerial sequel exemption. So there wouldn't be, it wouldn't be like a categorical exemption or a mitigated negative declaration. It would be the ministerial exemption, like we do for SV 35 projects.
Got it. So then there would, so if, on a traditional, prior to this policy, where you, where we'd go through the standard community meeting, public hearing process, the sequent clearance would be allowed or not allowed, or it just has a different name? And I think for these conversations, it really helps to speak in plain English. I don't think members of the, no offense to you in any capacity, but I think in general in planning matters, a lot of times we're reading things that we have to because we legally do, but I think the public doesn't always catch the connection. So, as you can, and I know, David, you're very brilliant in sequels, so however you come out would be great.
Yeah. So if the project doesn't qualify for standard projects, they would have to go through, you know, the full sequel process, where it means we evaluate it for what type of the appropriate level environmental review, and that could be an exemption, which means that you don't need to do more thorough studies because it meets the criteria for an exemption. Example for these type of projects is a Class 32 infill exemption. So basically, what that means is that an infill project could be exempt from further review if certain findings are made, like it's not going to have an impact to air quality, historic resources. So, if that doesn't meet, if the project would not meet that criteria, then it would be bumped into a different level of sequel review. So this would be where we're going to do, you know, an initial study and potentially do what's called a mitigated negative declaration, which is always hard to say fast, but essentially, that is a statement, we're saying that there will be impacts on the environment, and there will be mitigation measures, and that with these mitigation measures, there will not be any significant impacts on the environment. Many projects go through this process, and that is, requires a public circulation period. If the project has even greater impacts, or like if there's impacts that are identified that can't be reduced to a less than significant level based on the city's states and other thresholds, then we'd have to do what we call an environmental impact report, and that is the full project that requires a 45-day public circulation period, and if there's, if there's impacts that can't be mitigated, would have to be adopted by City Council. So there's various processes.
So, David, real quick, you're saying it's really project by project which determines the level of sequel, not ministerial approval?
Yes.
Okay, that helps. I'm happy with that. Okay, and go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to add too, to sort of try to simplify a little bit more of what David says accurately, but, so when you have a discretionary action, that is what is subject to sequel. When you have something that's ministerial, it is not subject to sequel. So it's the most basic, kind of the most fundamental exemption. It's called a statutory exemption. So...
I think I sense a comment coming.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm just going to add on what Jared said. So, many projects can receive an exemption under sequel. So, as Jared's saying, the sort of ministerial nature of this approval, it's like a building permit. It's a yes or a no, versus a discretionary project where we're sort of doing more evaluation and determining the outcome. Through that process, a project can still receive an exemption from sequel. There are different sort of categories under which that can be, that can happen, or, you know, if we analyze it and there are additional impacts, it goes through one of the other processes that David mentioned.
So let's say we're talking about the same piece of land with the same factors of environmental X, Y, and Z, and there's one, there's a policy of ministerial approval, and one of a public hearing process. Is the level of effort for sequent clearance any
There is a difference, yes. So, yes, there would be, so the ministerial process, there are not, there's not going to have to be the, the process where there's going to be an initial study or preparation. They essentially get to go and proceed directly to a building permit, instead of going through, you know, public circulation process. If they, that's one of the type of documents that requires a public circulation. You, you essentially go straight to the ministerial approval and a building permit process. It doesn't get them out of having to do technical reports to comply with the conditions, just like projects that go through the process now. If you have, let's say, a project that does, is not ministerial, you have an approval, and it has mitigation measures and conditions of approval as part of that, meaning that when they go to get their grading permit or any sort of demolition permit, they're going to have to then meet all those criteria. And sometimes to meet those criteria, you still have to repair technical studies, you still have to demonstrate that you're compliant with those conditions. That will still apply to the ministerial process. They just don't go through the typical sequel process where we have a public circulation period, a public comment period, which are going to a public hearing.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate, I appreciate patience, my colleagues answering these questions. And then, regardless of all the different things we talked about, any particular development could still be, a private party could still come in and try to sue to block it under sequel and challenge the city's exemption or negative deck or whatever the thing was.
Yeah. So for ministerial, that, because it would not be defined as a project under sequel, would be ministerial. They would not have that opportunity to challenge.
Got it. Okay, that helps. And then, as you look at the level of effort that's required from the planning department to process an application, is there any way to understand what the level of effort it is for the planning department to hold a community meeting? And second question is, what's a level of effort to take something through a public hearing? In pure staff time, preparation, hours, et cetera, if someone could talk about that?
So, with this, we looked at processing times of 90 to 180 days, which is what the state has kind of set for other ministerial permits as a typical review time. Our City Council outreach policy says that a community meeting cannot happen until an application has been in for 45 days, and then at that point, you can have it, and then typically have the community meeting, and then you can continue on with the project. So that is already kind of half of the time of what is typically a ministerial permit.
So that time, though, doesn't consume staff time. This is just the time that the City Council policy says, 45 days. No, no, I mean, staff is there to host the meeting, right? You're there to watch over it. You might prepare a slide deck. So I'm just trying to figure out the amount of staff time that goes in that community meeting.
I'm going to jump in on this one. So, so we look at that in a number of different ways. It's actually quantified best in our fee schedule, because we have actual sort of fees added. I don't have the exact number of hours, but it largely depends on how many staff are there. So I can say for larger, more complex projects where we have multiple departments or multiple staff members from the department attending, obviously, that racks up the number of hours total. On average, probably between sort of five to 10 hours total in organization prep and holding a community meeting.
Got it. Now, let's say we're going to the, doing the public hearing process. You've got to go to commission, you've got to council, you've got to prepare a report. I'm assuming that report is something you wouldn't do otherwise. You wouldn't, if it wasn't going to director's hearing or anything else, you wouldn't do that, so then you actually have to prepare that report. So I'm curious, like, then how many, because we're talking about time, right? We're talking about making things go faster, but I also want to understand, like, what's a level of effort that it takes to produce these reports at the public sees?
So through this process, we'd still be producing a permit, which we produce at the director's hearing, so there, but we wouldn't be producing what we produce for Planning Commission and City Council, the staff report. So there's significant savings there. We wouldn't be the staff time involved in preparing for that hearing, actually attending that hearing, you know, the multiple levels of review that that memo or report goes through. So you can kind of, I don't have an exact number for you, but you can kind of, kind of get a sense of the time saved, right, in that process. And we do, I think Michelle's trying to look up, we do have built-in kind of our fee schedule, like an amount of hours that go to the public hearing process. So I don't know if you...
Yeah, it's about 11 and a half hours.
Of staff time for one person?
It's, it's, it's an hourly rate, right?
Sure.
It's the various steps of the review process.
Right, and it could be 10, it could be 13, and some kind of thing there. So then, when you're, when you're looking at the whole other part of the process behind the curtain, right, because there's this part that we're talking about changing to save time, and then there's the part on the other side, what are the things that consume staff time that occupies the other 50 to 75%? And have those been looked at or modified to be done differently? Or can they legally, whatever? Because I feel like we need a time spectrum from an application. Data's submitted a day to approval. We've, we've, we're focused on this public process to eliminate, but I don't know if there's room to be gained in the internal process.
So, there's, there's a lot that goes into that. What I'll say is, some of the biggest considerations in time that essentially this process eliminates is around the sort of preparation and the public noticing process, which adds multiple weeks, right? So when we're completed through a process on the staff review, obviously, then we sort of set it, we schedule it for a hearing. We have to prepare and sort of collect notices, mail them out, you know, the, we have an entire timeline for that. The same is true for our community meeting process as well. So, I think those are the significant amounts of time. We are somewhat unfairly judged on timeline, because when you look at the total time it takes to process a project through the city, it's not all city time, right? A lot of it is back with the applicant, as they process and review the comments they've received from staff, and then amend and adjust their project to meet that. At various times in the past, we've looked at different ways of sort of analyzing that. Generally, our process is pretty tight. So, once we receive a project, we get first comments out between 30 and 45 days. It's usually a two-to-three week turnaround when we receive revised plans on that. So within that, you've also got a process around a community meeting. You've got scheduling the hearing. There's also other multiple departments that are involved in that process as well, and we're reliant on them sort of meeting those timelines as well.
Right. So the top, the clock's always ticking on the city. It's not ticking on the applicant. So an applicant can be a laggard and take up their time, and you, and there's nothing that says, "Applicant, you must get this in time for me to turn this in a fast manner." We don't do that, right?
We don't do that, that's correct.
As long as they want?
Yep.
Okay. And then, could...
Point of order, point of order. With due respect, Commissioner Oliverio, you've been talking for about 35 minutes, and there's other commissioners. Could you hold further comments until we have a chance to talk?
Could I just do one more clarifying point, and then get, and I'll pause?
It's fine.
Great. Could, as part of the process to streamline, could we change the noticing period or the 45-day community meeting period to where then that would shrink things? That seemed like that wouldn't affect anything. I'm just curious. Are we under legal standards for those periods of time?
So, the, for noticing for hearing, we have standards set by the Sunshine Reforms with the City Charter. For a community meeting, we have internal policies that we're following through 6-30, but the sort of additional time is really around our ability to process and prep for that community meeting, right? So, you know, we draw the boundary through GIS. We have to figure out all the properties in that boundary, prep notices that get mailed to each of those residences. So there's a lot of time involved in that.
Understood, thank you. As I said early, I appreciate people's patience, because I have a fair amount of questions.
Sorry, I just wanted to add too, there's other periods of time too, that are probably hard to quantify and capture. Like, for instance, there's two Planning Commission hearings a month. You know, if we miss by a day getting the posting in time, then we've got to go to the second one. Maybe it's the next month. Same with City Council, there's generally two land use hearings. So if you kind of, if you miss these hearing dates, then that can add time. If it gets deferred, for whatever reason, that can add time. So that also is eliminated and kind of, you know, adds an element of risk to whoever is going forward with that project of sort of unknowing when they might get a hearing versus just knowing if I meet the objective standards, I'm going to get a permit issued, right?
Thank you. We will continue discussion with Vice Chair Cantrell, followed by Commissioners Rosario, Bigford, Lardnois, and then back to Oliverio.
Thank you. Thanks for answering, getting a bunch of questions than I had. So, this will be short. Commissioner Young, I'll take as little time as possible. I'm just curious, and this is really more of a question to answer to the public. Why a ministerial process at all? What are we accomplishing by doing this? What's the point?
We're trying to build more...
We're, we're trying to, to build more housing and fulfill our housing obligations. And one of the, you know, when we did our housing element, as I alluded to, one of the things that came up is that it takes a long time to, to build housing and get it approved. And so through a ministerial process, we can speed up that approval process. And it's something that's within the city's control that we can choose to do. There are lots of other non-governmental elements, economics, other things that we can't control, that we can't do to speed up. This is something that we can do. And so to try to meet those housing goals, this is why we chose to pursue this, this strategy.
Okay, and we're in no way trying to quiet the public by doing this, is that the case?
That, that's correct, that the, you know, we still engage in public planning processes just as we did to, you know, plan those urban villages, as we did to, you know, develop our housing element and develop our, our general plan.
Okay, okay. Um, I'm curious, just kind of as a point in the process, would it be possible just to, to accept public comment? And maybe respond to it, but not, just, you know, some way give the public input, but not necessarily respond to it? Is that possible?
So currently in our outreach policy, we do have some methods that we do notify the public. Um, so we, projects will still be posting an onsite sign. So they'll be posting the signs so people can see that there's a project that's been submitted. They're posted weekly on our newly filed project list. They're available on issue permits if people are subscribed to receive development notification. They'll get an email and they'll know who the project manager is. Um, again, with the onsite sign, they can see who it is and they know who to contact. Um, and then all of our maps that show active planning applications will have that information too. Um, and so as I mentioned previously, the, the average review time that we've had for similar projects is about ten months approximately. Um, so people can still reach out to the project manager if they have any questions, if they, they want to find out any information. Um, they'll still have a point of contact that they can contact during that review process, similar to the current planning permits.
Right, so the public can still try to engage with the developer?
Correct.
Um, actually, I'll, I'll just say this, in my community, there was some ministerial, ministerial project going forward. And actually, the, my neighbors reached out to the planner and reached out to the developer. And actually, um, the planning department helped to get something unblocked that was, was very, very helpful. So it didn't preclude that contact, it just doesn't prescribe it. Okay, um, why not, why not more density? Is there a reason we stopped at, uh, what is it, forty per acre?
So our, the CEQA screening cri- criteria requires a minimum density of thirty-five dwelling units per acre. Um, so we did try to go a little bit above that, so we're doing forty dwelling units per acre. Um, and that was to include mixed use commercial. Mixed use commercial has maximum, maximum density of fifty dwelling units per acre. So if we went up to fifty, we would have excluded the mixed use commercial as a qualifying land use designation and zoning district.
That's helpful, okay. And um, it, it looks like there's only, we're expected only two hundred new units from this?
That's what we had in our metric of our, what we wanted to accomplish. So at least two hundred entitlements per year.
At least two hundred?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so that, there's nothing that gates it to stop cap it in any way at all?
Correct.
Okay, all right, um.
That's entitlements, not units, right? So projects.
Units and.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, I, I stopped the word units, but, okay. Um, uh, and, okay, that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, we'll go to Commissioner Rosario, followed by Commissioner Bickford.
Uh, thank you, I had a few questions for staff, one about uh, public comment and the other is about uh, design guidelines. So I, I don't think anybody in the city government, I mean, we talk all over our website and our other documents that we want to have public comment, we want to have public outreach, it's an important part of the processes of planning and whatnot. But when we did the housing element last year, one of the points of contention was we, we, they wanted us to do a ministerial uh, procedure, right? So the problem is, if we do the ministerial procedure, then we don't have public comment because there's no rule for it. There's no, nothing set up, right? And if I'm, and so it's not that we don't want to have it, it's just that right now, there's no rule for it. And you intend to change that, is that correct?
So the program is, refers to public hearings, so no public hearings. And so what is kind of eliminating the requirement for community meeting is our, our city council outreach policy in that it just doesn't address city ministerial permits as a type of permit. So it doesn't have criteria that says you need to at a minimum do these requirements. So as part of our update to council policy six dash thirty, what we want to look at is how do we address outreach for ministerial permits? So we will be looking at what it, with the community and outreach, what is the appropriate outreach methods that we should do for ministerial permits? Um, and then updating that policy to, to prescribe what they, ministerial permits would need to follow.
Okay, so if I'm, if I got this correct, we want to change the ministerial, or we want to change the policy for public hearings so that way people can have a voice, but when, including when it's a ministerial hearing, which right now we have no rules for, basically. Or is that, you can, you, you already said.
That, that's right, I just say, I would say, public comment in meeting, not hearing, but yeah, that's right. So like, you know, we, we intend to address the policy and actually updating the policy, as Michelle said, she's the project manager. We start is also a program in our housing element. So like, it is something we're committed to doing and we felt like that was the best place to address how we would handle public outreach for these types of permits is through the comprehensive update of that policy rather than through this current action.
And do you have any idea when this might occur? When this would be updated or anything?
Yeah, we have it, a goal of starting it in the new year. So once this is done in January, we'll start outreach for that and then have a project webpage with information on that and hoping to get it to city council by the end of next year, so end of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so right now, I'm getting all these emails and letters saying, how dare, you, you can't get rid of public comment. But the goal was never to get rid of it and it's, it's just the policy doesn't have a place for it. So what we're going to do is change the policy so it does have a place for public comment so we can kind of fix what the folks are upset about, is that right?
That's right, and I would just add too, that, that policy hasn't been updated in twenty years. So that's why we, we want to address it and we want to do it and we think it's better to do it in that longer process. But yes, that, that's right, yeah.
I'm, I'm glad you are addressing the folks' problems with it and as fast as you can. The other question that I had was about the uh, the local ministerial standards. In the ordinance, in Title twenty, Chapter one ninety-five, Section eighty, it says that, or in the proposed ordinance, right? Where'd that go? Let's see. Oh, I can't find it, but it uh, what you call it? It says, uh, generally, the, the, we added a number three, right? And it says the following shall comply, comply with objective design guidelines. And then we add streamlined infill housing development that meets the requirements in Title twenty, Chapter one ninety-five, right? My understanding is the objective design guidelines can be waived under the state's bone, density bonus law. And that can decrease the costs of construction or end of time, is that correct?
Yeah, so, so projects can, could use state density bonus law to waive city uh, design guidelines if they're eligible for state density bonus.
Right now, but, so my question is, right now, it says that if they comply with the objective design guidelines, then we can do the streamlined infill, right? So are those mutually exclusive, either being, complying with objective design guidelines and streamlining?
So to qualify for streamlining, you need to meet all objective standards and that includes the citywide design guidelines. And so the way that the design guidelines are currently written is people can request exceptions to the design guidelines as part of their application. So if they're going to a director's hearing, they could request it and it'll be part of their permit there or planning commission. Um, what we're saying with, with the density bonus is all projects are still required to meet all objective standards, including the design guidelines. But if the project is requesting to use state law, then for those concessions and waivers, they don't have to meet those objective standards, but they need to meet the state law that allows them to do that.
Okay, so they, if they met the state law, they could still be streamlined?
Correct.
Why don't we explicitly say that in the ordinance?
It, it is in the ordinance, it's, it's actually, it's existing and it's listed under the application requirements. So the application says that if you're requesting to use density bonus at the time of application, you need to submit that request with what concessions and waivers you're requesting.
Okay, so, so it is possible and it is explicitly stated that it is possible.
Correct.
That's what I wanted to know, thank you so much.
Thank you, we will go to Commissioner Bickford, followed by Commissioners Lardnois, Young, and Oliverio.
Thank you, I have a couple more questions for staff. I could not find uh, in the documents that I read, the actual definition for infill. I see that we're adding it to the amendment, but I didn't see where we actually wrote it down. Can you help me with that definition?
Yes, so it's under um, twenty point one nine five point twenty. It's under definitions, right? And it is under C, number three. Under uh, definitions of applicant and director.
Okay, uh, sorry, I, I missed it and I was looking all over for it. Um, the other question that I have is about this interesting list of sites in Exhibit D. And I wonder how that specific set of sites were defined? What, what specific criteria are they meeting? And whether or not there has already been any public comment on some of those sites? Because they look, some of them look very familiar to me. And the, the, the specific blocks in purple that are subject to this appear to be part of a, uh, some larger projects that, that had already occurred.
Yeah, so the criteria was based on if they were within a growth area, so the growth areas that were identified. If they had a land use designation of urban residence or transit residential, um, urban village or mixed use commercial. If they are not within the airport influence area, they're, they're not zoned, PD zoning. Um, that they are not currently occupied by, uh, they're not currently a multifamily residence. Um, and they're not on the historic resource inventory list for anything other than identified structures.
Okay, yeah, that was in the presentation. I, I'm, I'm sort of more, I guess I'm reacting to when I looked at the list of parcels. Several of them are, are very near residential areas where I'm assuming those residents would want to have comment. And it's a little concerning to me that we're, as, as several of my colleagues have said, the public comment, um, the ability to consider what's happening in, in your local area. I feel like um, we are taking some of that away before we're fixing the problem of how they can um, provide input. And it feels a bit like a cart-horse issue.
Commissioner Bickford, if I could just jump in, give a simpler answer. I mean, my understanding is that this only applies to areas with approved urban village plans. So that's really the basis of the sites that you saw in the report. I mean, it.
Uh, on, not only urban village. It is much broader than that.
It's, it's urban village as well as specific plans and then a station area. So, but they're very similar to urban villages, so they have had a public input process and a public review process, right?
The question I was driving at, right? They, these are, a lot of these are projects that have had public input previously.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, we will go to Commissioner Lardnois, uh, and then Commissioner Young and back to Commissioner Oliverio.
Thank you. Yeah, so I just want to thank staff for all the work on this. I've, I've heard about this ordinance coming for a long time, it's great to finally see it. And it's noted in the staff report that, or in the past few years, the average time for proposal to approval for a project through the discretionary process is twenty months, that's correct? And the goal is to get closer to six months, I, I think that's commendable. Um, I mean, I think back to even more extreme example, I live in District One and the El Paso project was roughly five years from when it was proposed to when it was approved. And changing market conditions over that period, necessity of the project being redesigned, not once, but twice or maybe there was even another time I forgot about earlier on the process. Um, so reducing the time here is, is really critical because I know that the environment that builders operate in is constantly changing and that kind of timeline can be really unpredictable. And just to clarify, because I, I just oversimplified things just there, it's urban villages and station area plans and is that, and specific plans, right?
Yeah, two specific plans and then the Caltrain.
Right, okay, so it, not entirely just urban villages, but in that broader um, umbrella of approve, you know, area plans. And also, as noted earlier, all of those are plans that are adopted with extensive community engagement processes, right?
Yeah, so typically, the urban villages had three sets of workshops and had focused community outreach meetings. For our last one, North First Street, there is actually an appendix that has summary of the outreach that was done. And so that also included neighbor leadership meetings, online surveys, virtual drop-in office hours in addition to those three community meetings.
Yeah, and then, uh, I mean, and just kind of citing a specific one, um, I live just down the street from the boundary of the Saratoga Avenue Urban Village Plan. I know the first community meetings are next week. And then the goal is to have it before city council in spring twenty twenty-six. So that's a year and a half of public engagement. And once it's approved, this ordinance would apply to projects in that urban village. But there is a lot of that community engagement being done as part of that planning process. Um, and then kind of going further on that, you know, we've talked about CEQA and you know, how it applies to projects more generally and how it applies with this ordinance. But when it comes to urban village plans, we do an EIR for the urban village plan itself, right?
Not necessarily, so it depends on the earlier urban villages that we did. They were basically like design guidelines for those particular urban villages. They didn't, they, the, the EIR for the general plan included their urban villages. And so it said that this kind of development would occur across these villages and these are the measures that would apply and it applied to all of them. So therefore, that wasn't necessarily an individual EIR for each urban village. So, and, but recently have started to want to, as part of an idea of basically streamlining development, um, similar to what we do of downtown, um, to have a more thorough analysis of development within urban villages so that the projects, all types of projects, not, not necessarily just ministerial projects, but all projects can come in. And that are, that don't qualify, this is, should back up, projects that would not qualify for a ministerial project under urban, under urban village EIR would be able to then streamline off and tear off of that EIR because it has specific standards for that area. So for example, it would include historic surveys and more, more detailed information. Um, but that has not happened much in the, the city because of staff resources. Um, the only places is that we've really done this so far has been downtown. Um, and in the past, we did North San Jose, but that has expired. And we are doing one for five wounds, so.
Great, yeah, thank you. And, you know, talking about urban village plans, um, you know, I've been through a couple of these processes now and they do prescribe to, some will detail what types of projects are allowed in them, right? I mean, like, these, there's generally trying to set a coherent vision for developing an area and providing a framework for projects to have to fit into, right?
That's correct, yeah, so, you know, as, as part of the process, they'll review all the land uses for the sites. Typically, there's a lot of sites in urban villages that are um, neighborhood community commercial and those could be changed to mixed use, you know, and so reviewing with the community, understanding what the potential development capacity size envelope of buildings developed through that process is usually part of the community process to have them understand what, what can be built and the capacities that would be developed under the changes proposed in the urban village plan.
Right, yeah, exactly. And so what I'm trying to get at here, um, because I think it's really important out of this context of the conversation, we're not just, this ordinance is not looking to rip out all the rules and just say, build whatever you want, wherever you want. What this ordinance is saying is, in these areas where we've already had a discretionary approval process to establish a plan that lays out what we want to have built there, has already in some form or another gone through environmental review and has had extensive community engagement process as a part of that, then we're allowing ministerial approval to go through in that framework. So um, I, I think this is a great ordinance, um, and I think this is really important, really gonna be a really important component of. of our, you know, strategy to accelerate the production of new housing in the city to address our housing crisis. I want to go ahead and make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the staff recommendation from Commissioner Lardinois, with a second from Commissioner Young. We will keep the discussion moving with Commissioner Young, followed by Commissioner Oliverio, and then I have a couple comments as well.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I wanted to thank the folks that came tonight, both in favor and with, you know, opposed or with concerns about this. Thank you for coming. I echo the community member that said, I'd like to have Zoom back also. I have grandkids too, that I have to watch every once in a while, so it'd be nice to be able to Zoom in. And hopefully, the city clerk will get that going. So I want to address, we got a number of emails from folks, well-written, thoughtful emails, and I just wanted to address a couple of things that were raised in that. The first one was a concern about not going through CEQA, and that that would, you know, be somehow dangerous to the environment or deleterious. I don't find that argument compelling. And the reason I don't is that David went through very carefully all the environmental considerations and reviews that the city is going to do through this process, air quality, biological resources, hazardous materials, noise and vibration during construction, historical structures, and tribal resources. That, to me, is very comprehensive, and that's going to happen. I think that's important to communicate to folks. I think sometimes when people hear no CEQA, they're like, oh my God, people are just going to build, and, you know, they don't even have to be concerned. The city's always concerned about environmental issues on every project. So I don't find personally that argument compelling. So now we get down to public engagement, public input, and what that can look like. So before I talk about that a little more, I got a question for staff. My understanding is, what the policy we're looking at is implementing Strategy P7 that the council approved as part of the housing element. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so the city council has already basically approved the concept of a ministerial approval for housing and infill, correct? Okay. So if that's true, then it gets really challenging to provide public input without giving people the wrong idea. And I actually want to quote just a little bit out of the letter from Catalys SV, which I thought was a really good letter because not only was it advocating, but it was addressing some of the concerns that folks had. And one of the things that they said was, "The only thing worse than no community engagement is a cloudy, disempowering process that turns community members off from engaging and lowers their faith in government." So, you know, if we have public meetings where people feel they can come in and have input on changing the project, and then they're told, no, you know, you can't because it's ministerial, that's not good at all. Okay, so, you know, I think that I'm not, I guess the fact that if the council is going to say that we should do this on a ministerial basis, then I don't necessarily think community meetings are good, as long, unless it's really communicated clearly that this is just for information. Now, there's nothing that would keep a developer from voluntarily holding a community meeting, correct? Okay. So I live out in D9, and Council Member Foley is very good about, we've had several ministerial projects come through, and she has gone to the developer, and they've done a voluntary meeting. But when the council member sends the email out to folks, she's very clear that this is only for input, you know, it's a ministerial process, you know, where the city can't say what it's going to look like, et cetera, right? So, you know, I think one of the speakers and some of the folks that wrote in say, where's our voice? Your voice is with your council member. You elect your council member. So if you have a concern about a project, go to your council member. And I think oftentimes, they'll go to a developer and hold a voluntary meeting. So, yeah, I mean, I think, I support, I support the motion. I second in the motion. I think we need more housing badly in the city. Housing is too expensive. Folks can't afford to live here. They're moving out. Our young people, our working-class people can't afford to rent. We need more supply, and this is one way to do it. So, you know, I'm in support of the project. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Oliverio.
Thank you, Chair. So staff, going back to Alom Rock, the city there made a decision to have ministerial approval, correct, in the form-based zoning?
No, so we excluded those because mixed use and multifamily in the MSG and MSC zoning districts require conditional use permit. And so because those require conditional use permit, they're discretionary, we can't, we're not making those part of this permit, those would still go through a CUP.
So, Mr. Planning Director, I think you're looking, so?
Well, and I think your question was, did the form-based zoning establish a ministerial process previously?
Yeah, I was, yeah, I was under the impression that because we wanted development along Alom Rock Avenue with two council members in a row, that they established the form-based zoning to speed development along where it would not go to Planning Commission or the city council.
So that's correct. It didn't go to Planning Commission or the city council, most of those projects. Well, a conditional use permit would go to Planning Commission, but it didn't, essentially, it did not create a ministerial process.
Got it.
It was still a discretionary.
So that process just eliminated city council because a CUP could go just to the Planning Commission level?
Right, and a regular site development permit would go to directors' hearing.
Okay. So in that case, the city removed some level of, you know, part of the process.
So form-based came in just prior to the adoption of the last general plan. It was really a pilot to experiment with a different type of land use, where it really sort of dictated the form along the corridor, as opposed to using traditional zoning districts, which looks by use, right, whether it could have commercial use or, you know, in certain cases. So it was really an experiment in how you shape development as opposed to a shift in process. So for the most part, Alom Rock still has the same processes, traditional discretionary development in other parts of the city.
Got it. And then, can any time be saved in the site development permit process? Is there any time savings available there?
So that's much the same process that Michelle and Jared have been describing. That's our typical development permit process. So, you know, as we said, you know, it's all much the same.
So that's back to the discussion where we had, where you'll provide comment, and then you're waiting for the applicant to respond?
If applicants would provide perfect applications, we would happily approve them in about 60 days.
Right. So, you know, I've always been very candid with residents and having to, you know, approve projects against a lot of people disapproving them. And we took the time to explain why we were doing it. And I know that's really tough for people to have to hear from members of the public that are disappointed, have a differing view, et cetera. But I really think the public process, the hearing process, really provides the opportunity to explain to members of the public why we're doing things, right? We have an organic population growth of the city, and there's the, obviously, need over time to expand certain amount of housing, and you can't do it like a flip of a switch. It's going to happen over time. And so it was always important for elected officials and planning staff to explain to the public why we were approving housing. In addition to that, you know, I think it also provides the opportunity to explain where the state has come in, and either through HCD or various laws, you know, essentially tied the hands of the city to where it must approve. And without the public hearing process, none of that education exists. Yes, someone can send an email explaining it, but it's simply not the same. And I think in the whole realm of transparency and small-D democracy of what we're trying to do is that, you know, removing the public process, I find it painful. Because even if I disagree, or anyone disagrees with, you know, someone who's opposed to a project, whether they're informed or uninformed, at the end of the day, they have a right to speak. It's the foundations of the country, and I'm not trying to be too grandstanding on it, but I just genuinely believe people should be allowed to give feedback to their elected officials, not just in an email or a phone call or a community meeting, but at the official place where government business occurs. I just think that's fundamental. And yes, a developer could hold a voluntary community meeting, but it doesn't have the supervision of the city. And they can say whatever they want, and then lots of misinformation and disinformation goes out in the community. I think when I look at other cities, how they're handling this, some of the developers are so candid with the members of the public attending them, saying, we're doing this because state law allows it, and nothing's stopping it. And I'm like, bravo for your candidness, right? Because that's what they're utilizing to do it. And I think when I look at the urban villages, that I was a part of the process, Bascom, the Alameda, St. Carlos, you know, yes, we did planning. We told them what was going to happen. And I'd have no problem saying what was proposed is going to come forward, but we never told them, this is your last chance to ever speak about it. And so that is something that's changed. We also didn't say that AB 2097, removing all parking, was part of it. We didn't say that density bonus would change the height that we said, we promised them, it wouldn't go any higher. And now with the state density bonus, it's going to go higher. And I think those people deserve the opportunity to be heard and understand what impacts them from the state. So, and I, you know, this isn't an easy vote for me to oppose, because I generally support density that's planned, and I have no problem telling people no when it's been planned for a long time, especially in the right places. But this is difficult for me to support, especially because we're saying, hey, we're going to do this, and then we're going to come back in a year and revise Policy 630. Really, those should be in tandem. And because it's not in tandem, it's, the sequence is wrong for me. And I, going back to other things, I talked about improving the speed and time of that. So I, you know, thank my colleagues for allowing me to ask some questions and share concerns. I, you know, it is what it is, and I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll go to Vice Chair Cantrell, and then Commissioner Bendall.
Okay, I'll be brief. Actually, this is, these kinds of things are difficult. This is a difficult job. I know it doesn't really look that difficult because we just like read things and then respond, but it's fairly difficult. I always go back to something my mom used to always tell me, try not to disappoint people. I think she mostly meant, don't disappoint me. But the point is, you know, we're sitting here, and we're trying to understand the community's needs while we usually lose focus of something I think really important. I'm a profound capitalist, but I think capitalism can be responsible. We have a responsibility to the people who invest significant amounts of money and time to build these projects. It is really difficult. I'm an economist, and I still can't figure out how they manage to get anything built when they get financing commitment five years before they can put a shovel in the ground. Can't figure it out, but they show up and they do it. We have to remove the obstacles, and this is what this is about. We have to speed up this process without corrupting the community process. That's hard to do. I don't think that we are disappointing anyone here, to be quite honest. I think there are places where this works, and there are ways to make this work just fine. I've seen it. I didn't participate in it, but I witnessed it. It is possible. So when I vote yes for this, I'm voting yes for this because I don't believe it causes significant harm to anyone, while at the same time, it unlocks the ability for development. So that's why I'm doing this, and I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bendall.
Yeah, I'm, thank you, Chair. Thank you, staff, for the presentation. I'm a big advocate for community engagement. There's a project coming up called Pleasant Hills Golf Course in my area, a huge project. They have three community engagement meetings. I went to all three of them. So I get it. I love community engagements. The more people, with the more ideas and more thoughts, I think, the better the project. At least, that's the idea. But at the same time, we're in a housing crisis. And, you know, a few of my colleagues here mentioned that, you know, like, just Commissioner Cantrell just mentioned, it doesn't cause significant harm, and it does streamline the process up to 25 to 50%. So with that being said, I'm in favor of this, and I'll be supporting the motion.
Thank you. And I also want to thank all of the members of the public who came out to speak. I know this has been a longer meeting, and also want to thank all of the staff who've put a lot of time into this policy. I spoke in favor of this policy when the housing element came before the Planning Commission back in 2023, and I'm very excited to see it, you know, on the verge of being put into practice. You know, a few weeks ago, we had our Planning Commission retreat, and we heard an update on the annual cost of residential development report, and staff reiterated that in the current environment, most housing construction does not pencil out. And a lot of those costs are things that are beyond the city's control. I like this policy because it is focusing on something that is in the city's control. And I think if we look at the savings, the time savings from the ministerial review process, and the time and process and predictability savings from the CEQA exemptions, this actually feels like a policy that could move the needle on bringing down some of those construction costs and helping to get more projects actually built. I also agree with some of the comments from some of the folks who came out to speak tonight, that there is, you know, room to improve this program over time. I personally would love to see the eligibility criteria expanded in future phases to include downtown and other growth areas that are zoned for residential development. And I also think that there is room to allow redevelopment of existing older multifamily housing stock, as long as we have tenant protections in place. I think that we should look at allowing those sorts of projects to also take advantage of this ministerial process. There was a question earlier tonight about, you know, what happens if we don't, you know, vote to approve this, if city council doesn't vote to approve this. So I pulled up HCD's letter certifying our housing element, and just wanted to read a couple quotes. It says, "Throughout the planning period, HCD will be actively monitoring timely and effective implementation of all programs, including Program P7, the city infill housing ministerial approval ordinance." And it goes on to say, "Please be aware, the government code grants HCD the authority to review any action or failure to act by a local government that it determines is inconsistent with an adopted housing element. This includes failure to implement program actions in the housing element, and HCD may revoke housing element compliance if the local government's actions do not comply with state law." I think that this is a good policy, a common sense policy that will help to speed up these projects, make them more financially feasible, and get more housing built. But I wanted to read that just to reiterate that there are actual risks of failing to move forward with this policy, namely, if we were to be decertified and no longer in compliance, it would bring back all of the host of remedies that the city was previously subject to when we did not have a compliant housing element, including the builder's remedy. So for anyone here who is wary of a ministerial process where there is less public input into what gets built where, I would reiterate that, you know, at least this current process is restricted to these 600 sites that are already zoned for multifamily residential development. If we were to fall out of compliance with the housing element and have builder's remedy come back in, it would be a much less regulated free-for-all environment where developers would once again have the ability to propose essentially whatever they want anywhere. So again, I think that this is a good policy that we should proactively support, but wanted to make sure that folks were aware that there is risk of failing to move forward with this as we committed to do so, and as council committed to do so when we adopted the housing element. I don't see any additional hands, so if there's no further discussion, we can move on to a vote. As a reminder, the motion on the table from Commissioner Lardinois, with a second from Commissioner Young, is to approve the staff recommendation. We will get the vote started with Vice Chair Cantrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Barocchio had to leave, so we will move to Commissioner Bendall.
Yes.
Commissioner Bickford.
Yes.
Commissioner Lardinois.
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio.
No.
Commissioner Rosario.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Myself, yes. That's seven yes, one no, and one absence, so the motion passes. All right, that concludes our public hearing this evening. Next up, we will move on to referrals from city council, boards, commissions, or other agencies. agencies. Staff, do we have any referrals?
We do not.
Okay, in that case, we will move on to good and welfare. Do we have a report from city council?
No, we took a week off council last week.
Sounds good. Do we have anything on subcommittee formations, commission calendar, or study sessions?
No, we do not.
Okay, then as always, we will open the floor to any public comments, or comments for the public record from commissioners.
Can, can I just ask for somebody to send us the 2025 schedule again? I, I, I know I saw it once, but I can't tell you where it is. Thank you.
And then Commissioner Oliverio.
Yeah, just want, I want to make a comment on outreach. I, I really think there's a variety of voices in the city, but I do feel like we neglect actual bona fide neighborhood associations, and they, those neighborhood associations don't get any funding from any people that have a stake in development. So I think it'd just be good to make that part of the process, especially if you're gonna revamp 630 in 2025.
Thank you. And Commissioner Lardinois.
Yeah, just, given this is our last meeting of the year, I want to say happy holidays, everybody.
Yes, happy holidays, everyone. And if there are no further comments for the public record, we will adjourn at 8:41 PM.
Do you have a comment?
Feel free to come forward.
Hey, commissioners, I'm Alec Shore with Catalyze SV. Sorry I missed all the meat and potatoes today, I had a couple other meetings. This is not on the agenda, and I know it's something you've already weighed in on, and I just wanted to thank the commissioners for their discussion on, I heard Commissioner Bundal bring it up again a few minutes ago as I was walking over here, Pleasant Hills Golf Course. It's gonna be a big project again in 2025, and I wanted to thank the commissioners for the issues you raised during your recent discussion around the density of the site. Catalyze SV anticipates that we will continue to be involved in this project, pushing the developer and the owner to go higher on the site to make sure that we have the amount of housing we need, so that everyone in this community who's here and wants to move here can afford to be in this valley, and we need that density to go up, and we think that this developer can do that. So, again, I just wanted to thank you all for weighing in on this project, for those of you who specifically brought up the issue of not enough housing. I think Commissioner Lardinois brought it up, and Commissioner Cantrell, if I recall, and so appreciate you guys staying involved in this project, keeping an eye on it in the public realm, as it makes its way back to you one of these days in 2025. So, sorry again, I missed the discussion, I was watching on my phone, thank you YouTube, and everyone have a good night, thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will adjourn tonight at 8:43 PM, and we will see you all in the new year. Thank you.[1765.83]